All right. Good evening. It is Thursday, July 11, 2019. This is a special Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Take the official roll. Beth Hostler.
Present.
Chris Kuzinski.
Present.
Courtney Troutman.
Present.
Jim Collins.
He's still here.
Karen Stupin.
Yes.
And Dr. Harrell.
Present.
All right. All seven board members are present. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens or representatives of other public agencies. I don't have anyone on the list. Does anyone else want to make a public comment? All right. Then we will move to our discussion topic, which is referendum financing update. So, Sadie.
We have Elizabeth Hennessy here from Raymond James. We left a, we have a PowerPoint at your spot, at your chair there, that Elizabeth will be presenting.
So, a few weeks ago, we took note that interest rates had come down due to national politics and the market's perception that the economy was slowing. And in fact, compared to last November versus a couple of weeks ago, 10-year rates had come down a full 1%, which, if you're refinancing your mortgage, you know is huge. It makes, it makes a big difference in not only what you pay, but the total amount that you repay on your mortgage. So, the question at the Finance Committee meeting was, should we take a look at issuing some debt? Since interest rates were again at these generational lows, which they last saw in 2016 and before that, I don't know, maybe it was the 1960s. I don't even know. So, since then, interest rates have gone up a little. And the question is, where are interest rates? If we decide, well, whatever we decide tonight, if we decide that we're going to move forward, then we should set ourselves a parameter in which if interest rates go above that by the time we would be ready to issue bonds a couple of weeks from now. If interest rates have risen too much, it's, it's not worth our while to do so. I think we have been very diligent in trying to, trying to save as much money as we can for our taxpayers. Under the original plan that was presented in the referendum, that had us issuing $25 million of debt in this past January. We decided with interest rates at that level and the fund balances that we have, that we would forego issuing that debt until later, because that was in the best interest of our taxpayers, and we would just use fund balance for that $25 million and pay the fund balance back at a later date. So, you know, unforeseen, by the beginning of July, interest rates are back at generational lows. So, the question we have before us tonight is, do we move forward and, and issue debt? And at what rates are we willing to do that? And how much do we want to issue? So, with that, I'll give it to Elizabeth.
And Elizabeth, show the impacts.
Right.
And just to echo what he said, interest rates have come down over 1% since January. It's really a terrific time to be in the market. Why has that happened? Inflation is low. We have instability globally with the other economies of the world. We also have the trade wars weighing very heavily on the psyche of the U.S. economy. And then we have the Fed, who in 2018 raised interest rates many times, I think about six times. Now, we're looking at a decrease at their meeting in July. And Chairman Powell was speaking today to Congress. And I think it's all but baked in that it's going to be at least 25 down. Some experts were saying 50 rate cut versus all the rate increases we've seen in 2018. So, for all those reasons, we're in a really great environment to issue bonds. And so, as Jim mentioned, at the Finance Committee, we looked at how much, when should we go to market? So, the when question was pretty much decided at the Finance Committee. We should go soon. And we've talked to our underwriters. It's, you know, now kind of a debate before the Fed meets or after, but within the next several months to lock in these incredibly low interest rates. And we did a break even that, you know, should we issue now versus waiting till January? And I think the break even was if rates went up 35 basis points, we'd be in the same place. So, not a very big change. So, that, that question was answered. And then the question was really revisited. You know, we're looking at about $32 million for the first issue based on the drawback of the Finance Committee. The question then became, well, if rates are so low, how much should we issue? Would it be, who's the district to lock in more of its referendum bonds at these rates? And we will answer that question for you about what is the maximum you can issue now based on federal tax law? Because we now have a draw schedule from our construction manager. We know how much we need to spend in the next three years. And if you recall our conversations, you can't, you can only issue the amount of bonds you expect to spend in the next three years. Like, you couldn't issue the full $168.5 million now under any circumstances, because, you know, we've got a five- to eight-year construction schedule ahead of us. So, with that said, we wanted to make sure, whatever we do, we're within the promise to the taxpayers. So, let's start there on page two. This is from our referendum material in November of 2018. And we call this "The Promise" for the $168.5 million. And at that time, we were looking at $25 million in January of 19, $50 million with some refunding in 2021, April of '21, and then coming back for the final amount, the largest amount, of $93 million in 2023. And at that time, we built in reasonable interest rate cushions for these future issues. And we staggered the issues in this way, because the district is currently paying off its existing referendum bonds. So, we couldn't just go out and issue a ton right up front without impacting the taxpayers more than the Board wanted to at that time. So, the original plan, you know, here you see the total debt service. I just key you into that number under the column that is four from the right that says "Total Debt Service," $433.6 million estimated. Again, we've got rates from November of '18, and we've got interest rate cushions of 75, 1%, and 1 and 1/4. We also then look at the current, going to the right, the current debt service tax rate and the proposed debt service tax rate hitting a peak of around 64 cents in 2025, and then kind of leveling off and going down after that. The one thing that has been changed on this promise sheet is an update of the EAV, because we now know what happened in 2018. And the EAV went up 6.9%. So, that growth is because of reassessment and because of new properties coming on the tax rules here in the district's tax base. So, what, if you recall, a lot of conversation about the $500,000 homeowner, the increase over time was going to be about $150. Because the tax base is now bigger, that same $500,000 home, the increase is $138 as opposed to $150. So, that's kind of our new promise number, is $138 on the $500,000 market value home. So, two other things that we like to look at here is the average annual debt service was about $17.3 million a year on average, and the average annual debt service tax rate was about 57 cents for the 25 years. So, that's the promise. Going to page three, this is where we figure out how much we can issue now. And that maximum number is $60 million. And we come up with that after working with the construction manager, looking at how much we need to spend in these upcoming months, in the next three years. If we figure the soonest we can close is August of 2019, three years from there takes us to August of 2022. That, that takes us to about $60 million. So, that's the max. We can issue anything less. The other thing that this chart shows is estimated interest earnings. So, that is something that, you know, the district's going to start needing to think about and pay attention to, and that interest can be plowed back into the project and help, you know, fund the projects as originally planned. So, option one on page four, we have two options for you, $60 million going to the max and $50 million. So, I'm going to have some summary charts for you, but I just direct you to the column one to the right of the proposed debt service tax rate. So, if you recall, on our promise option, we were going up to a maximum of 64, yeah, 64 cents in the year 2025. In this case, our maximum is lower. It's only 60 cents, but it comes sooner. It comes in 2022. Long-term, the average tax rate for option one of $60 million is 54 cents versus 57 cents. Why? Because we're locking in $60 million of your bonds at today's low rates. So, that means the bonds that are being issued in 2020 and 2023, or 2021 and '23, there's less out there, where we have interest rate cushions to protect the district from, you know, higher interest rates and make sure we've considered that, so we don't get surprised. So, that's good. The total debt service is, you know, over $20 million less, $431,000 million versus $408 million. Again, we've got today's interest rates plus the cushions, but today's interest rates are almost, you know, over a point lower, our starting point, than they were in November of '18. So, we've really got a fabulous market to, to think about. If we go to the next, oops, I'm not moving on my screen, sorry. Let's go to option two. This is a $50 million option. So, again, you know, we can choose any number. I think the construction manager says we need at least $32 million in this issue. Okay? So, that's the lowest. The highest, as we went through, is $60 million. But we said, let's just look at $50 million and see how that compares if we issue a little less. So, in that case, if we look at page five, and again, going to that column second from the right, we hit our max rate in 2025, levy year again, of 59 cents. All again, much less than what we told the taxpayers at the beginning of, of the promise, but we go up a little quicker than we did with the original promise, because again, we issued so few bonds up front, rates were higher, and we have the other bonds that we're paying off. So, in this case, on the $50 million option, again, the savings are great, over $20 million on total debt service. And then the annual average debt service is again much lower, at $16.3 million, and the tax rate is 54 cents, .542 versus .541 on the $60 million. Very, very similar. These are averages over the life of the debt. So, I think they're very similar options. The thing that is different is that the $50 million is a little bit less impactful in the early years than the $60 million. So, this tax rate comparison chart, I think, kind of puts the three options together. So, let's start with the blue line. That's the promise. We, you know, slowly go up to that, 64 cents in 2025, and then very flat after that. The purple line is option one, the $60 million. So, here's where you see we kind of go up towards that 60 cents, and we get there sooner in '22, '23, but then we're much lower than the original promise for the life of the bonds. And then option two, the $50 million, that's the red line. So, in this case, you go up just under the purple line to a maximum, you know, of around 59 cents. But again, we go up quicker than the blue line in, in the first seven years or so. But again, long-term, the savings are huge. And the savings, you know, for taxpayers over time are reflective as well. So, let me pause and see if I've lost you or there's any questions before we go to the next chart, which really compares the short term with the long term.
Jim?
So, one of the questions we have to answer tonight is, do we save taxpayers money in the long run or money in the short run? So, clearly, if you're moving out of town before 2024, you're going to pay a little more in real estate taxes. If you're sticking around for the long term, you're paying a lot less. And that's one of our questions, right?
Absolutely. Chris?
Yeah, thank you. I was just hoping you could comment on the, on page two. I'm just looking at the, the interest rate assumptions and the out years, and I'm wondering why 150 basis points was chosen. And I don't have a sense for, just is that degree of spread widening in the mini-market something that was experienced in the last cycle, or how that was chosen?
You know, and it really goes back, and I apologize, I think if you go to the, when we go to the summary page, you'll see that the far out option is at 125 as opposed to 150 for all of these options. It's just an abundance of caution, kind of going back to the way rates were in, you know, '94 and in some of the mid-'90s before we hit the recession and rates came down. And we've enjoyed in my, our lifetime, slow rates for so many years here, since the recession, you know, '07 and whatnot. It seems more the norm, but it was really an abundance of caution, especially when we're going to the taxpayers initially, you know, to see. If we go back to a historic normal, what could we see in terms of rates?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, you know, 150 bips is a nice round number, so I wanted to make sure it was based on some historical fact pattern rather than just an arbitrary increase. So, it sounds like essentially a historical stress test.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, could you go into detail on the IFA?
Oh, yes.
That's outlined on the $60 million option, please?
So, I kind of skipped over that, and I didn't mean to, so I apologize. So, municipal bonds issued in Illinois are federally tax exempt, meaning the interests that people earn, they don't have to pay federal income taxes on them. Very few bonds are issued with state tax exemption. There's a way you can get state tax exemption, and that is by issuing bonds through the Illinois Finance Authority. So, there is a fee for it. It doesn't work for all bond issues, but bond issues of size, you know, the savings versus the fees really comes out in the favor of the issuer, because the savings is at a minimum 10 basis points. Right now, state tax exempt bonds are very popular. We have a governor who's looking at a higher income tax rate, and to have that, these bonds, the interest on these bonds where investors don't have to pay state taxes is very attractive. So, we're assuming a 10-basis-point lower interest rate by issuing the bonds with state tax exemption to the IFA. So, the net savings over the life of the bonds is $652,000. Oh, that's over the, all the bond issues, but over this particular $60,507,000. So, the 652 number, so if we issue this bond issue with lower rates, the other bond issues, because we can, you know, pay them off quicker and faster, that's the total savings over the $168.5 million. But on this particular bond issue, over the life of the bonds, it's worth $507,000 net savings.
Okay. And your assessment is that at a $50 million issue in size, the fees associated with qualification are not justified?
No. It's in there, too. So, on the $50 million, it's totally justified. We just didn't do the savings on that. We just, it is through IFA, too.
Okay. Got it.
Yes. We're assuming that you would want to do that. We think it's a great idea, great recommendation. Just while I'm on the subject of interest of buyers, we would like to make these bonds available to your community, because individual investors are very interested in state tax exemption, too. So, one thing we'd like to do, if we do decide to go forward, is to do a local newspaper ad, a tombstone ad on the district's website, and let local community people who, you know, voted for the referendum or not, doesn't matter, but participate and have the opportunity to purchase the bonds and have priority to, in fact, receive the bonds that they want.
Thank you.
Margaret, did you have something, or?
I have a question. And maybe this is coming up, so this might be predated, but see the chart, very clear, long-term savings, short-term increase. And maybe if you're going to.
Let's go to the next page.
Come on the following pages. How much? Is that coming up?
It is, right here. So, page seven, again, we're looking at our $500,000 home. And we split the impact for the first seven years, 2018 to 2025, and then the last 23 years, 2026 to 2042. The purple color represents the outstanding bonds, because we have those to contend with over these first seven years. So, under the promise, we issued small amount and had very little impact, about $67 on the $500,000 homeowner in the first, on average, in the first seven years. After that, and the old bonds go away, the payments are $883. So, now, don't think they're going from $67 to $883. $67 is just the, the new piece. So, I think 707 is the amount of the current bonds. So, the $67 in the promise was on top of that, right? So, that's 774 to 883. In option one, the impact of the new bonds goes from $67 up to 119 at the, in the, on average in the first seven years. But then down by almost $100 to $793 in the last 23 years. Then the option two, which is the $50 million, it's a little less. So, we go from $67 to 101. So, it's a little softer, because why? We're not issuing the full $60 million. We're issuing a little less. And the long-term, though, is a little higher than option one. It's 803. So, the theme of this is, the more bonds we can lock in at the low rates, the better off you'll be in the long run. But you're absolutely right. It's, you know, a little pain now for bigger savings later, and how do you feel about that?
Can I just add something here, too? Is that something you need to weigh if you decide you want to go in this direction and you're trying to decide, you know, how much you actually want to do, is that as, as we're trying to manage the project, we know that construction costs are going up. So, for us to be able to maximize what we actually do to make sure that we stay within the $168.5 and can do everything that, that we want to do with, with what we told the community we wanted to do, the more money we have up front, the more we hedge ourselves against future inflationary costs. So, so that's something to consider as well.
Expand on that.
So, you're hedging yourself against future inflationary costs because you're able to move some of the projects forward on the timeline?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's what, just what I wanted to clarify. Does that mean that there will be accelerated timeline on some of the projects that may not have been in Phase One?
Correct.
And do, is there a list of priorities of those projects yet?
Well, we had this, you know, the Finance Committee meeting was the 25th. The architects and the construction managers and Todd met, I don't know, I assume Chris was at the meeting. I met with them on Tuesday. They have to take a look now at, at how they might restage if, if this, you know, comes into play. They, they will take a look at, there, there could be some, so for example, some of this, like Brian was going to be done in two phases. Would we save money when you have all the people bid and all the people on site to just do that whole thing first instead of in two stages? We don't know until they start pricing out, you know, different things. Same thing with things like Jackson. Jackson is a school that was going to be done in two phases, because we were going to do the security first and then the rest of it second. There's also other things that, you know, could come into play with accelerating the field project or other things like that. So, they, they have a lot of things that they have to look at now, because it's, it's an entirely different, you know, it's a different game if we have more money up front.
Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the point on, on page seven and also on, on page six. And I think these assumptions are, are well-based, but for folks who might, who might listen in on this at a later date, you know, they're, they're assumptions, right? And near-term tax rates may or may not go up above, right? It depends on the near-term pathway of, of interest rates. And in the current, the contemplated budget, you know, we're issuing over half of our capital four years from now. And I think that there's a lot of risk associated with that. And I think there is, you know, understanding what the assumptions say today is important, but also just exercising a degree of, of prudence and judgment around, you know, we're financing a very long-lived set of assets with long-duration bonds, and interest rates are at, you know, generational low. And it, it just seems like a prudent decision to de-risk what we need to get done here, in my opinion.
All right. Maybe?
So, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to, how precisely to word this question. Fundamentally, it comes down to, I guess, it is incredibly clear that there is a, a long-term benefit to this strategy. Okay? So, what I'm trying to understand is, obviously, there's a change to the short term. And Dave highlighted a potential benefit that could come out of this project for a short term, in the sense of projects could be completed sooner. So, that would be a benefit to the community. So, that's what, I guess, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure I consider. Again, very clear, long-term financial savings, benefits. Short-term, talking five, 10 years, benefits. If not financial, what other type of benefits? And that's an open question. What other type of benefits would come for our community for this decision?
Well, one other thing is that if we have more money up front and earn more interest on it up front than the amount of money that we would have to take out of fund balance to do some of the increased summer maintenance projects that, where we went up, we, we almost doubled our budget in that, you know, we could offset the need to have to go into fund balance as much for, for those summer maintenance. balance as much for, for those summer maintenance projects or use that, that money, I mean, however the board sees fit, but that's, you're, you're getting interest on more money, maybe not, you know, I don't know if, you said, you, you kind of did some calculations on estimating that. I don't know what number that was. You, you mentioned it before, but I don't recall.
Well, like the 60 million, I mean, based on the draw schedule paying it, you know, spending it three years, I mean, at 2%, you might earn around $2 million on that. So that could be helpful. Either cushion, you know, this project and you can use interest earnings, really, you can transfer it to the O and M fund, you can use it for projects.
Jim?
Money market funds return about 2.5, 240, something like that? And we're issuing at a blended rate around 322?
So we've got cushions in here. Yeah, we've got the cushions.
310?
If we take it down, we might be close, we'll be under 3.
We will, okay. So roughly a 50 basis point gap between what we can earn versus what we're paying out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And as you know, when you earn over what you pay, yeah, that goes back to the federal government, essentially.
Wait, say that again.
If you earn more interest, let's say short-term rates go up. Doesn't look like they're going to with the Fed decreasing.
Right.
But let's just say they did go up and you could earn more than your yield on the bond. Whatever additional money you earn over the yield on the bond has to be rebated to the federal governments.
Interesting. Thank you.
And that just goes to, you know, they don't want you to issue bonds without spending the money, right?
Seth?
I just wanted to add, Margaret, that from what Dave and Jim said, some of these projects may end up costing us less in the long run if we're able to do them sooner and get ahead of inflation, correct? So in the long term, we might end up, so for the, as a benefit to the community, you know, our projects in, as a, in a whole might be, might cost less.
I, I, I got it. And long-term, it is, it is, it is clear, I mean, it's crystal clear. I just want, and there, I think there are substantial, we've highlighted a couple of reasons why this is still a benefit in the short term. And I just want to make sure we highlight those reasons, just out of fairness for our community, you know, since this is a little different than what we had talked about and why we're doing it.
That's why we wanted to have this meeting today, several days in advance of Tuesday's meeting, because this isn't easy, right? You're, you're essentially deciding to raise taxes early, which if you're moving out between now and 2025, that's not good for you. But if you're sticking around for the next 20, 25 years, it's very good for you. And that's what makes this a hard decision.
Not a complete no-brainer, right? Yeah. Because it is so good on so many other levels, right?
Elizabeth, can you help us kind of put it into more equal wording than what we promised the community? So for example, the $500,000 home, what the communication has always been is it's $150 for that average, that $500,000 home. That was with projected EAV because we didn't have the actual EAV. So early in the presentation, thank you for pointing, giving us an update, with the actual EAV, that $150 promise on that $500,000 market value home is now at 138.
Yeah.
If I were to look at, you showed this slide, but I guess I'm looking at seven, whichever works for you. Like, how can we put it into more equitable terms to help the community understand, you know what I mean? Like, what will it be for me? Because I remember the promise being 150.
Right.
Because I have to look at, if I'm planning, I had that planned. And if somebody's saying, you know, it's going to be more earlier, how do I account for that? It might be okay because in the long run, I'm saving so much money in the long run. I just have to figure it out for the first either seven years?
Seven years, yeah. We always went through 20, 25, so.
So I'm trying to figure out, you know, to help them understand how much do they have to figure out in those first seven years, because they're going to be saving so much later.
Isn't it true, Elizabeth, that maybe one of the ways to answer Karen's question, from a communication standpoint, is that even though that, that spike is a little bit earlier, that, that, that 150 on a $500,000 home is, is less now, like what?
Yes. So let's go to the summary chart on page eight at the bottom. And, you know, it's $138 with the increased EAV. And if we look at option one through IFA with the 60 million, we're at 92. Option two, with the 50 million, we're at 93. So substantially lower than over the life of the bonds. So then we have to turn to the first seven years and the last 17 years, you know, and, and do that split for people, just so they know. And I, I don't know what you like better, what, you know, we can work with Bev to try to figure out what makes the most sense in making this simple and understandable to the community, you know, how that's, how that, those averages are different.
Great, thank you. It's really about the communication and trying to keep it as close to what we've originally communicated to show that difference to them. But I like this page, you know, saying basically, you know, 92 and $93 versus 150 or 138 helps a lot.
Yeah. Good. Yeah, it's just, it's really substantial savings over time with these lower rates that ripple through the whole structure. And it's just, you know, the other thing I want to make clear is in no case is a taxpayer paying more than the maximum tax rate that we originally projected and promised. So that 64 cents in option one, that max is 60 cents, it just comes a little sooner. And the max in option two is 59 cents. So in both of these cases, we're well below what we originally talked about in terms of the maximum.
So I'm clear on, on that? So what was, what was indicated to taxpayers at the time was 150. Now, independent of this financing decision, that number is 138. And then if we make, either we choose option one or two, that's now declining by like 40%?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Over the life of the bonds, yes.
So the second piece is that when Dave or Chris, do we have a sense from the construction crew that they can move things up and get them done in the timeframe before school starts and those sorts of things and make sure that they have, they can get the man, the manpower to add projects in the timeframe?
Well, most of the, if you were to go with the 93.5 as the last, the, most of the first two issuances were to take care of Lincoln and Brian, the safe and secure entrances where, where needed, and then Lincoln. And so, so most of the other schools were going to be relatively untouched until the end. So exactly, and, and so sometime after 2023. So I don't know exactly how soon, but, but somewhere between 2021 and 2022, they would be able to move those projects up. In the summer of 2022, there wouldn't have been a lot going on other than Lincoln. And so until they, until they can recalibrate, and, and, and I don't know, Chris, if you think that, if that, if that's going to take a couple of weeks or how long it's going to take them to, to be able to do that. But, but the fact is, is that a lot more schools will get touched earlier. I just can't say until they start running numbers exactly what they think would make the most sense.
Yeah.
I just, I think it's going to take a little time to prioritize and, and so it, it might take more than two weeks. I, I don't know what process we're going to use to prioritize projects, that sort of thing. I know that, that there's some desire to get all-day kindergarten, so, you know, it's, so maybe Jackson and Jefferson are some of these schools that might need that. So I'm not sure how long that will take exactly. I think we need to first get the, this board meeting settled and, then we can start working on that.
Well, and what I'm trying to do is get a sense of, you know, yes, financially, it looks great, but if we can't do the project. So I get that this is a step, but we want to make sure that they both come together, lockstep in a relatively, you know, short timeframe is all I'm trying to highlight. Is that what we understand it to be?
Yeah, there's, there's no, well, I mean, you're looking at the difference between 25 million and 60 million upfront. You're also looking at the difference between 75 million and what would it be, 110 million? So no matter what it is, it, it's going to be accelerated. It's just that it, it would be difficult until they know if they're talking about 50 or 60 or whatever the number is, it's, it's going to be difficult for them to, to recalibrate a project schedule because, you know, there was a lot of thought that went into this initial thing, staging the projects around the bond issuances. So now that, that's an entirely different, you know, scenario that they have to plan for. It's good news, whatever it ends up being, I think. I think Chris is right, though. It's difficult to, we need to give them a little bit of time to, to sit down and do some thinking about what would make the most sense.
And that's fair. I guess what I'm asking, though, is, is to give me a sense and the community a sense that if we pull this trigger, that they can then come to the table with that. That's what I'm trying to get a sense of here, okay? So that, thank you, if I wasn't clear. But Chris, you brought up the last thing that I have, Cara, is the programming piece. So not just, you know, moving some of these projects up, but moving programs up. That would be a plus for the community. An example that Chris said was all-day kindergarten, maybe at some locations that weren't going to be until the end of the project, right?
Well, if, if we can come up with a way to move field up, then everybody gets all-day kindergarten a lot sooner. Now, you know, Terry Moeller just about fell over when I said that to him on Tuesday because, you know, that's an entirely different, you know, concept than what they were originally thinking. But, but those are the types of things we have to figure out what we can do.
Right. So maybe it's not the large school of field because it's a new school, but it's maybe the other schools that were going to be laid or can be moved up. Maybe.
I just, I just would encourage, before we expend too much brain damage on what we would do if we're able to finance these projects at, at these contemplated levels, just to make sure that we're able to actually execute in the marketplace. Because, I mean, you know, the markets move, so I, I just wouldn't recommend spending much time on that until we actually know that it's been achieved. And then at that point, we can dive into it.
Well, right. That's the other thing, is that they don't know exactly, even if you authorize them to go up to a certain amount, if the rates change or something like that, we, we don't know exactly what that issuance is going to be ultimately be, so.
Just to pile on what Chris and Dave just said, interest rates only have to move 30, up 35 basis points. And then we're doing nothing. We're, we're back to our original schedule of issuing next January. Right. So, yes, before we get, before we stir up too much dust, markets move quickly.
And that is kind of, well, Margaret, I want, let me just, if we go to page nine, talk about moving quickly, we are moving quickly. So we have scheduled the rating presentation for, right after, or on July 16th, which is your meeting. And we want to be ready to get into the market either the week of July 22nd or the week of August 5th. We're skipping the Fed meeting. So we're going to be talking closely with our underwriters, see what's going on. And if we're ready to go ahead in that week of July 22nd, we can. The Illinois Finance Authority has already approved the district, so we can, in fact, issue through them. So we have been a bit busy. And right now, we look at closing this on September 4th, so that's when you'd have your money. So presuming we don't have any big crazy interest rate swings, I think we're ready to go.
And what would be the risk that we wouldn't be able to execute the week of the 22nd if we wanted to? Is that dependent upon documentation and?
Well, if the rating, the rating agencies have said we can receive the bond rating by Thursday, July 18th, if they, it, that's the only thing, if that moves, that's the only thing that would keep us from not being ready. We need to have that rating in place and the document on the street. The preliminary official statement, which is the offering document, needs to be in investors' hands. We're also ready with ads in the newspaper for the community so that they're aware. So we're, we're ready to go and we, we, you know, can stop, of course, and negotiate a sell, that's a beautiful thing, if, if we have a market movement. But we, we've actually done quite a bit, so we're ready to go.
Elizabeth, that decision between those two weeks kind of comes down to what you'd refer to as market technicals. Right now, you were telling me there's a, a lot of issuance in the market, so the market is very crowded with new issues. August is typically a slower month, and we would, we would gain more of a spotlight by coming in August. So it's kind of a judgment call of the technicals in the market between, do you come before the Fed moves? Because, you know, there's an old, the old Wall Street adage, you know, buy on the rumor, sell on the news. In, in our case, it's reversed, issue on the rumor, don't issue on the news. Because even though the Fed cuts rates, general level of interest rates could rise if the wording in the Fed announcement is that they expect to be on hold for a very long time after, after their rate cut. So really, the market is looking at not what they do, but what they foreshadow that they're going to do in the future. So, you know, personally, I'm inclined to come as soon as possible before the Fed does something.
And I agree with that. And just to, to piggyback on what Jim was saying, we've had a lot of conversations with our underwriters, because the other thing is supply and demand, right? If, there was a ton of supply in June that a lot of firms are still sitting on, if, you know, and working that off. So presuming they've got it pretty much cleared out by mid-July, we should perhaps be ready to go that week of July 22nd.
Wait, sorry, just to, sorry to be a pain, but perhaps ready to go, if we want to go, we will be ready to go. Is that?
We are ready to go, but-
Okay.
If our underwriter says, you know, we still have all this inventory that we're working off, not, you know, we, speaking for the greater market, not just for Raymond James.
Mm-hmm.
If that's cleared out and we have bond maturities coming due, so a lot of bonds pay July 1, so that interest money needs to be reinvested. So that's a good thing. But it's, it's a supply and demand dynamic. We will be ready if our underwriter recommend, you know, we really rely, our, our market people are excellent and they do not lead us astray.
Okay, thank you.
Courtney, did you have some?
Yeah, I really appreciate this because it really helped me clarify what our options are. And for me, what, sitting through this, the thing I'm most excited about is getting more of these schools touched sooner. Because the one thing, when we were out there talking about the referendum, that we used to hear is, so wait, I'm not getting anything until 2022 or 2023. And this really means that more schools can be touched sooner. And that makes me very happy for everybody in our community, because I think it will impact more of our students and families in more schools quicker. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just, just maybe. Let's, let's just get through, you know-
I believe I said, if we move forward.
Yeah, yeah. Just before we get too excited, you know, things move quickly and we'll see what happens.
Can you just go back to slide seven?
Sure.
So if I'm doing my monthly budget and I live in a $500,000 home, the promise was up until 2025, I need to have $67 more a year. up until 2025, I need to have $67 more a year than I do now, on average. Okay? So that's about $5 a month. I realize, not exact. So if we were to do option one, and I'm doing my budget, I need to now have $119 a year additional, on average, which is about $10 a month. So, and then, but the promise then, it would have gone up after 2025, correct? But then in option one, it actually goes down a little bit.
Yes.
So I would maybe pay a little less.
Goes down by almost $100 a year.
Okay. So I'm getting a bonus there, so to speak. Okay, so, because that's how I think most of us that aren't in the financial market, which I love that they can speak to that, but I feel like that's, you know, how does it really affect our taxpayers? And a lot of them, you know, I think it's important that they understand what it is in the real dollars and how it affects their monthly bottom line, I guess, budget expenses. So I just want to make sure that that's, you know, how it is. And I like that bar graph for that reason, and, yeah, thank you.
And do you have any feeling, you know, the option one, option two, the 60 or the 50? I mean, in terms of total interest savings and overall savings, they're close. Option two with the 50 has a little bit lower ramp than option one, the 60 million. And again, all based on assumptions, maybe market's great in '21 and '23 and we realize savings there, too. Who knows? But right now, we're being conservative with our cushions. But does that, does it, anybody have a feel either way on that? I mean, I think to Chris's point, he said, let's lock in as much now if we can and all stays good in the market, take the risk off the table for later versus, you know, maybe a little lower ramp with the 50 million versus a 60 million?
I'm happy to jump in. From a prudent standpoint, 60 million is kind of a third of what we intend to do. Just to keep the numbers around, I kind of like a third, a third, a third. I would favor the 60.
Me as well, but I might change my mind, depending on what interest rates do.
You've got till Tuesday.
Exactly. But I do think that, you know, authorizing just some wiggle room in terms of, you know, making sure that if the market does move before we're ready to issue, that we can stop, right, is important and setting that an appropriate band, yeah.
Elizabeth, do you want to kind of outline the idea of a parameters resolution and that the board authorizes a smaller group of people to...
Absolutely. So on the 16th, the board will be considering a parameters bond resolution. It'll authorize up to 60 million, and hopefully we'll have direction on 60 or 50 for sure by then. And within that resolution, it authorizes, the board gives the authority to the board president and the administration, typically Chris as Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, to give the final okay on the board's behalf. The parameters in the resolution outline a not-to-exceed amount, a not-to-exceed interest rate, not-to-exceed levies, based on the information that we've looked at here. And so all those parameters must be met as well. But the final, pull the trigger or not, comes down to the delegates of the board. And you can have more or less, you can include the chairman of the finance committees if you like. And so that's the subset that gives the go or no-go. And just so I'm understanding, I believe the no or no-go is, I mean, if we are off to the races and rates go up 35 basis points, that's kind of the no-go scenario. We're going to go, you know, wiggle room up or down, a few basis points here or there. We've got, of course, our supply-demand dynamics to take into consideration, too. But as long as we're in that, you know, range, I think it's prudent to lock in these rates at this low, low level, which is why we're here.
And the parameters resolution that you outlined, Elizabeth, is similar to what we have been executing on behalf of the taxpayers for at least six years now.
Yes.
And it's been very favorable. And so it's that same concept.
And it has a six-month life on it, too. So, you know, that's how long it's good for, and if nothing happens, then you have to re-up another resolution.
Here it referred to, in the last seven years, as we've been refinancing the existing district debt. You know, we didn't always call the bonds on the day they were callable. We, again, waited for the market to kind of come to us and ticked lows. I mean, we, we got most of them. We ticked most of the lows in interest rates over those seven years and saved our taxpayers a lot of money. Right.
And just to clarify, when you say save money, it doesn't mean that it came to the district, it means the taxpayers never paid it, correct?
Correct. That totaled just over $13 billion.
So, the question, can I, talking to you, Elizabeth, also, Chris and Jim, using your knowledge, when I look at this intuitively, I would go with option two. I would go with option two because the totals, 774 versus 808, and I'm adding that, those bars, 774 versus 808, and 808 and 803 is pretty constant. And those, that dollar amount just seems to be, okay, bird in hand, worth two in the bush. That, that's by intuitive thought process. Wondering what you guys would say, the benefit in doing the 60 versus 50?
Yeah, I mean, I can jump in. I just, when I look at the assumptions, I think that they're, they're nice to look at. But, you know, we're talking about assumptions on interest rates four years from now on half the capital, right? I mean, we're financing debt within the threes on something that just moved a point in the last three months, right? And so, you know, these things can move around a lot. And so the options outlined here are good and it's prudent to look at that, but my preference would be to do the maximum amount because we're, just when you look over the very long term, we're financing a third of our project at what is a generational low in interest rates. And, you know, these, these options may or not, may or may not become true in the future. And so I just make sure you're not putting too much weight on the exact pinpoint estimates here, because they can move around quite a bit, quite a bit, yeah, both in the short term and the long term.
Even if we execute this short term, still the long term?
Sure, we still have half our, you know, we still have two-thirds of the capital that is out there. So my preference would be to de-risk the projects for the district and the taxpayers by issuing the most that we can at this point in time. And then we'll have to deal with interest rate levels, you know, at the time with the remaining two-thirds.
I just had, basically reiterate what Chris said. I mean, we are, you know, 2016, we hit the lows, and two years after that, we thought we would never see those again. All the predictions were interest rates going up. So here we are, back at those lows. It seems like a gift, and a gift that we're supposed to take.
Beth? And just to reiterate what Courtney was saying, you know, the rates, you know, what the taxpayers paying will go up sooner, but the projects are also going to get done sooner as well. So they're going to reap the benefit of the projects under the referendum sooner and see more of that, even though the cost is going to go up a little sooner.
Yeah. Anything else? Yeah?
Let me just, this may sound a little silly, but just kind of a closing thing, right? We are 10 years into an economic expansion, which, Chris, you may know if this is correct, I believe it is the longest on record? Just past the longest on record. What I know about economic cycles is whenever somebody starts saying it's different this time, they get proven wrong. So somewhere in the future, and I hope it doesn't happen for another 10, my retirement account hopes it doesn't happen for another 10 years. But somewhere in the future, we will head into a recession. And when that happens, typically, interest rates go down again. And even better for us is construction contractors are looking for work and, as a result, bid lower prices. So if that happens between now and seven years from now, I would encourage the board to take advantage of that and move forward even more projects and put more projects out to bid and move the timeframe of our borrowing up to take advantage of low rates and cheaper prices in construction. I may or may not be here when that happens, so I'm leaving that to you guys.
I want to just thank you to Elizabeth and your team. You guys have been great. And I know it's been a lot of work, so thank you.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Elizabeth does a wonderful job.
You guys are too kind, thank you.
All right, if there's something else, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, I'll see you next Tuesday.
Okay, so before we, I asked for motion to go into closed session, I just want to say there'll be, we have two upcoming meetings. Tuesday, July 16th, 2019, is our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center. It starts at 7 o'clock. And Tuesday, August 13th, 2019, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7 o'clock here in District 205 Center. So, and we will plan to just adjourn after the closed session.
Yeah, no more.
There'll be no comments or motions or action taken. So with that, if I could have a motion to go into closed session for the three items.
So moved?
So I moved to go into closed session for 5 ILCS 122C11, 5 ILCS 122C6, and 5 ILCS 122C5.
Second. Do you call the...
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Corforio, sorry. Corforio. Yes, seven I's, no N's. We will go into closed session now. Thank you.